Recording in progress.
Welcome, everybody, to Board of Selectmen meeting for April 25, 2024. It is 6:03 PM. Can I have everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. And so everybody's aware, we're recording via WCAT 6, via Zoom, and it's also being livestreamed on Facebook. If anybody else is recording, please let us know so we can inform the public. If you're called upon during the meeting, please identify who you are and what your position is with the town, or if you're a resident. First thing on the agenda is discussion on the webpage, anticipated vote. Make a motion for that. So we have Civic Plus. Okay, Mr. Farrar, did you look into anything else?
Yep, so Civic Plus is our current web provider, renews every year. This year, their increase is quite substantial as compared to last year. Last year's number was about $2,600, so they're renewing, they're looking to renew at $3,500. This is for them to lock in for no additional increases from what they're saying from last year, you know, moving forward in future years. You know, there's an opportunity for the town to look at some other platforms. You know, this is one that is used by several communities throughout this Commonwealth, but there's other platforms that are available. You know, it will take some time for us to look into other platforms and to see what exactly could be better for the town moving forward. This renews, I believe, May 1st. And for the town, if the town wants to continue on, I would recommend that, you know, for this time period that we renew for this year, but have it as a goal for next year to look at a different option.
I agree with that. We've kind of run out of time to make a change this late in the game, or go out for bid for a new website, or how we do that, because again, it's a lot of information on the website. We can't lose the website, because we put a lot of stuff out there, meetings and stuff. So we could at least maintain it for now until we can make a change. But we do need to, at this increase, we got to look at a different site. That's user-friendly for people to apply data to, because this is kind of complicated.
It's awful.
Yeah.
So I had talked to somebody who does websites, and they said, setting up a website is not a big deal. It's getting all the data over that can be really expensive. There's no easy way to do it, according to him, so.
It's man hours, right?
Yeah.
Takes somebody to do data entry.
And these people aren't going to be willing to just say, oh, here you go, you know? So that's going to be our.
They're the biggest game in town, but.
Yeah, so that'll be our hurdle is, how do we get the data over if we change?
Fortunately, it's not a lot of money, because it's like $300 a month. I do believe that, as the town owns the information, I don't know if we can find out what happens if we don't renew, you know, they should, you know, dump that, all that information into a recipient, so the new company can grab it and, you know, redo it. Not, you know, that's how it should work. I've done it before with our websites, and where I worked for, a guy did it on one of our websites, and when we said, "No more," he just gave me everything in a memory stick, and it was just like a document with everything. Maybe it's a good opportunity to knock the door and say, "Hey, you're going up. Any chances we can get a better website?" And put all our most common things of, "It's not for the user, it's really hard to do this, 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 and that," and say, "Hey, you're charging even more." But look, this is, this is the feedback I get from our people. You're charging us more, any chances you can make this better?
At least put our phone number on the front page.
With this company, they have many upgradable versions, but they are much more expensive. We have the basic version, but then they have like the steps up where you get more information, more access, different, but they say right off the bat, too, with those versions, there's, you have to take different training classes, because they offer training classes, which they don't offer on their website, they offer on another site. But the training class is specific to the version you're doing. So I don't know if you get the better version, if it makes it easier or more user-friendly to use.
Yeah, I kind of wonder that, too.
You know, they did mention that, when I did reach out to Civic Plus, that they're, like you said, Mr. Chairman, that there's other versions available, and, you know, they'd be happy to go over them with us, you know, that may be something that, you know, we could, you know, consider looking at, you know, this next year, you know, before, you know, our year's up, you know, within this agreement.
But right now, we make a decision on what we have with us, in front of us, and if we're going to continue with them for now and explore.
I think we have no choice at this point, to just keep up with one more year. And like you said, as a goal, not next year, as a goal for now, start looking at, because it could be that, okay, let's redo the whole thing, and that's going to cost us $5,000.
Yeah.
You know, it's even more than this, so.
Yeah. We just need more time for looking at other options.
Yeah.
What says you?
Upon full and complete payment of amounts owed, oh, for project development, customer will own any website graphic design, services content, module content, importable slash exportable data, and archived information. All right, so I'm just, I read one sentence from their legal agreement. So maybe the chances are good that we own our data, which sort of makes sense.
But we still don't have somebody else to go to and.
No, we don't, but that, again, that's the big hurdle, is, you know, getting, because all these are, they're just template sites, right? They're just, well, but I mean, but it's the content that makes it.
It is very hard, you know, like.
Set up for you to put data into.
Happily say, "Hey, I'll do it, guys, for you, because I've done more than 200 websites." Nah, this is a lot of work.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's a lot of hyperlinks going from one thing to another.
Yeah.
You got to set up all the links and how they talk to each other and.
This is like a three-month ward.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah.
And we just, we're out of time, so we have to.
Oh, no, we're not, this is not happening.
No, we're in the discussion part. We know we have to approve it. We have no chance, no choice at this point.
Yeah.
Okay, we're good?
All right, so I'll make a motion to, are we, do we need a motion? I mean, I don't even think we need a motion.
It's just a bill we could just.
It's just a bill.
Just pay it.
For the increase? You vote for the increase?
We have, though, I have to have it signed.
Oh, yeah, we'll get it signed.
Is it in there, though?
Price went up.
Oh, yeah, so you got to do a motion to allow me to sign for it.
Do we?
Yeah, if you want to, yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to have David sign the Civic Plus agreement.
One-year agreement.
One-year agreement.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. All right. Stay. 25th?
Yeah.
Time is going so fast.
It is, right?
Thank you so much, I'll put it on next week's bill.
Thank you. All right, next thing on the agenda is discussion and revote for the Selectmen's budget, anticipated vote. Okay. So we discussed, there have been a couple changes to Selectmen's budget.
Chairman, I could go through those changes if you want.
Can you go through that?
Sure.
We've already voted, well, we've pretty much supported the rest of it, we just need to know the changes, so.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, as part of, you know, getting down the budget and getting down, you know, a potential increase within the budget, we were, we took out what was proposed before of funding the town levy through the omnibus budget. And so we're going to be funding the town levy maintenance and repair of $25,000 through free cash this year, so there will be no line item for town levy and maintenance within the omnibus budget. And we're also proposing taking out the maintenance of town buildings of $25,000, originally within the omnibus budget, taking that out and funding it this year through free cash. So those two lines have been, have been taken out. As well as in Selectmen D, the legal expense line, we had originally had talked about $125,000 for budget for legal expense. Giving, given that we are having a fall special in the fall, we can assess where we are with legal expense there, we may be able to settle some ongoing legal cases that the town has, and therefore may not require the 125 at this juncture, and we can reassess in the fall.
Okay, those were only three changes?
Yes.
Do you guys have any questions about those?
No.
No, sir.
Okay, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. And do a motion to approve the Selectmen's budget?
So. Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the Selectmen's budget for FY '25.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, next thing on the agenda, discussion and approval of the omnibus budget, anticipated vote. Make a motion to do so.
I'll make a motion to approve the omnibus budget for FY '25.
Oh, did you have any questions about it? You already, I was in the meeting. Yeah, so you're good with it?
I'm good, yeah.
Okay.
I need a second.
Second!
Derek, second. All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay. And discussion and approval of the special and annual town meeting articles, anticipated vote. You guys all good with them?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the special and annual town meeting articles for May.
So, Mr. Chairman, you may want to, just with the caveat on the special, that the special will be left open until the end of May, May 21st about. So just approving the articles as to form right now, and then, then the annual would be, you know, the final closing of it tonight with all the articles.
Okay. I amend my motion to include that. SDM will be left open, ATM is closing, right?
I think you have to restate it now.
All right. I make a motion to approve the special town meeting articles with those left open for the moment.
Currently.
Currently.
For the special.
For the special. Yeah, and then for the annual town meeting to close that tonight.
You could do those two separate motions.
Ah. I'll make a motion to approve.
Don't make me censor you.
Special town meeting, articles, and leaving them open for the time being. And then, oh, that's my motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. Motion passes.
And then I'll make a motion to approve the annual town meeting articles and close the warrant tonight.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay.
That's why I like you, Dean Clerk.
I need to do the next one, too.
Why is the warrant different from the articles?
Discussion of possible vote to close the annual town warrant, anticipated vote.
Already did that.
You already did that.
We already did that.
We did that in the first article.
Okay.
So we're good. All right, warrants and bills, anticipated vote.
Make a motion to pay the following warrants, number 63 payroll, $49,750.38, number 64 vendor, $68,718.14, number 65 payroll, $53,694.06, number 66 vendor, $12,490.61.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Bills?
Make a motion to pay the following bills, Weston and Sampson, $14,404, KP Law, $2,030.57, Encore Fire Production, $500, Buffon Cleaning, $2,700, National Grid, $2,047.71, Comcast Business, $143.35, Verizon, $11.39, Stera Cycle, $121.25, Merlin Leasing, $1,273.31, Warren Electrical, $1,475.20, SBA Structures, $1,753.85, Hamden Communications, $1,500, Vanpool, $4,851.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And next thing is minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from April 11, 2024.
Second?
All in favor?
Richi Harker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board. I have a couple items that I'd like to report to the board on, since we didn't meet last week and moving forward. So I'm pleased to report that we do have our clerk started in the assessor's office, Sheila Huckins. The assessor's office is open. It is open from 8:00 in the morning, 8:30 in the morning, till 1:15 in the afternoon. So she is our administrative clerk. She will take messages to the board member.
Hold on one second?
Yep.
Was there somebody banging on the door? Is the door unlocked out there?
I didn't unlock it.
I don't unlock, I didn't unlock it.
Somebody coming into meeting upstairs.
Oh, okay, but it's unlocked.
I have to double check, yeah.
You just came, all right. Sorry about that.
No problem.
I thought I heard somebody banging, and I wanted to deny somebody coming in to the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we have Sheila Huckins that started this past Monday and has been welcoming residents that have concerns with, in the assessor's office. I do also want to report the great work that the capital planning committee has done. They wrapped up their work this week. Capital Planning has put together a capital plan and a capital budget for the town that was sent out to the board this week. They've organized all of the capital improvement requests, they prioritize them. We came up with a rubric as to how we evaluate projects that are presented to the committee. And I'm pleased to report that in fiscal year '25, there will be approximately $405,000 of capital improvement projects, townwide, okay? Whether it be for either putting some money aside for future purposes, or to address capital needs of capital projects that are ongoing for various departments. So the departments that have been approved by the committee to move forward, highway, fire, wastewater treatment plant, the Shepherd Building here were key, key requests that will be funded in fiscal year '25. So this is the first time that we have a plan, a budget, and a five-year plan moving out in quite some time. For the last four years, the town hasn't had this, probably five years, the town hasn't had this. And this is very important for looking at capital needs and capital requests. So all of the members, I know Rich is the chair, and all of the members, Ray, and Dan, and Dawn, did a great job with all working together in putting this plan together and into action. So it's a great testament to what we have going for us for next fiscal year. So there's going to be capital projects that are going to be addressed next year. And in addition to other major things that we're doing with grants, improvements on Otis Street, other things that Highway is doing to invest into our roads and our infrastructure, that will also be part of, you know, that's capital improvements, that's a capital asset as well. So those projects are just in addition to what Highway and Grants that we're going to be doing and addressing in neighborhoods in addition to that. So that's $405,000 in addition to roadwork and infrastructure work that we already have planned in other areas. I'm pleased to report that, you know, at town meeting, the town will be presented with a budget of a modest increase of 2.82%, which is right in line with our growth of our budget. And I feel comfortable that we'll continue to have room to fund that type of budget and that type of growth. We are also anticipating some spending at the annual and special town meeting. If all of the spending was to be approved, the budget growth would only be somewhere around a 3.9% increase from last year to this year. So again, it's right within the 3 range, which is where a lot of towns are. And I feel comfortable with that, but we have to remain vigilant. We have to continue to look to ways to grow the town in terms of revenue and in terms of new growth, whether it be commercial development, or new housing, or a new growth in terms of additions or improvements that people are making. Those are critical needs for the town to make sure that we capture those and continue to get that new growth for our levy. So those are, those are some of the challenges that are real, and if we remain vigilant, I think we will be able to be very successful in future budget years. But I'm very proud of the work that the FinCom has done, reviewing the articles, everybody that, you know, had, had, you know, an opportunity to look at them, and the departments have made all of their requests. We've asked some departments to, you know, to work with us with addressing some potential needs at the fall special from some departments that were willing to work with us. So it's much appreciated that we can, you know, make this budget work and not have a big increase for the taxpayers. We'll be putting our analysis together, as we do at every town meeting so far that I've been a participant of, of what the potential impact would be on taxes for the spending proposal that is going to be brought forward at town meeting. We'll have that ready. But there are the articles that are before, you know, before the body for the ATM will be posted next week on the website, so the public will have an opportunity well in advance to see those articles and to review them and to get educated on them. The omnibus budget will be going out to print tomorrow, as well as the articles. They'll be printed together in the omnibus book, and we'll have them available. Our goal is to have them available before the election come May 7th, to have them available for pickup at the election. So that's critical to get that, to get those budget books out there, as well as Town Report is available as well. So I know that a lot of people worked very hard, Karen worked very hard to get the Town Report together and get it all organized, and that just came in today, right, Karen? So you can pick up both of those things, you know, before the, when you go out and vote. Another thing that happened this week, Mr. Chairman, we had bid openings for our Weston, for our project over at Otis, Otis Street. our project over at Otis, Otis Street, the Phase Two of School Street, in Otis Street. We had seven respondents for bidders, potential bidders. An official award will be going out soon, but there is a low bid. And we're doing our due diligence and making sure that's a qualified low bid. And we're going to be able to save some money on that project. We're going to be able to potentially save somewhere around two hundred thousand dollars on that project, you know, and maybe we could repurpose some of that money into another project in the future. So, there's a lot of things that have been happening. We're moving right along with that. I know that we have some applications that have came back for the assistant assessor position. So, we're going to be looking and reviewing those this week. And I know that the board was looking at them just yesterday in the office, and that's something that we'll be reviewing, that's a critical position to fill, as well as filling of the lieutenant's position as well. We've got some of the resumes that have come back. The chief has provided them to me. I will be forwarding them individually to the board members for their review as well. And we'll be getting those out to you very soon. And we've been working with the sewer commissioners to work on getting their sewer rates, to have their, set their public hearing. They're going to be having their discussion of that next week, and, you know, looking to set up their public hearing on setting of the FY twenty-five sewer rates, because that's a critical piece as part of the budget, to see what they need to raise and where they need to be with their rates. They really should have an idea of that before they go into town meeting. So, we've been working very hard on those projects there, as well as this week, or last week, we had the fire company Encore Technologies, which the bill was just paid, go over to the town hall, the police station, go through all of our fire alarms and fire, fire emergency lighting exits and different things. The fire alarm passed, there was no issues there. All of the emergency lighting was addressed last year, as you remember. That had all passed. The second and third floor, we decided not to address any of those because they're not occupied. It's just not occupied for emergency lighting. So, but the first floor, all the emergency lighting has been addressed, and it passed. So, that inspection was last week. We also have coming in here just this week, we're getting a quote, the chief had asked to use some of the funds for maintenance funds of town hall to do a strip and wax of the floor over at the police station, some rug cleaning. So, we had Pride Rug Cleaning Service in this week from Bonneville, giving us some quotes of some maintenance work that needs to be done over at the police station to keep some of the cleaning aspects and the annual stuff done over there with the rugs and the stripping of the floors. We're going to address that. We'll get that quote back hopefully early by next week. They will address some of the rugs in here as well. There's only a few departments that have some rugs left as well to see if we can take care of those needs as well. But other than that, it's been very busy with getting the town meeting warrant done, getting the omnibus budget done. And I really want to thank all of the committees, all of the departments, everybody for getting all the information together. We worked very hard to get this done, and finally, it's, the ATM is done, the omnibus is done. It was a great undertaking by everybody that played a part in this. So, it's, I thought it was well thought of, and I hope that we get a lot of people at town meeting to look at it.
That's it? Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Farrar. Do you have any questions for him, sir?
I do not.
Okay. Do you have any questions for him?
No, sir. Good job.
Good job. Thank you. All right. Anybody have any new business?
I do not.
No, sir.
No? Okay.
Nor do I.
Old business? Do you have any old business?
No.
Nothing? No?
No, we don't have anything from last two weeks.
No? No, we're good. Correspondence? We got one. We got a letter of resignation from Mr. Bruce Martin for the assessor's office, Board of Assessors. He is resigning his position as of April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four, today. Okay. Do you guys have any correspondence?
Uh, no.
Yes, sir.
The other thing is also Jake Olivera's meeting is for tomorrow, so you're aware. That's where he meets at the Senior Center to discuss, and I believe it starts at eleven thirty. It's eleven thirty. If you want to go talk to our Senator, Senator Olivera, it is at, let me just make sure of the time. It's at eleven thirty tomorrow at the Senior Center is where he has his opportunity, so you can ask him questions or express concerns. Okay? Other than that, you guys have no, no other comments?
I was just going to say, just to mention that we're going to this Rural and Western Mass Conference on Saturday.
Yes.
Hopefully get some more information about what's going to happen, how the state can help our towns.
Rural communities, yeah.
Yeah. So, we do have that conference going on that is Saturday morning, and it's the morning, it's the afternoon, and all three of us, all four of us are going to be going there to see what we can do for the town. It is a conference amongst the selectmen and other individuals to, again, help identify, identify potential resources that we can get for the future. So, it should be good. All right. And now we're on to comments and concerns. Do you have any comments or concerns, sir?
I do not.
No, sir.
I just want to say thank you to everybody that came out for the, for the Earth Day cleanup, for the support from the schools and, you know, police and fire and everybody, trial court, everybody that was participating in it. Thank you. We were able to do our part and get some full bags. David, thank you very much for helping me on the town counseling.
My pleasure. Again, you know, it was a great time. I concur with you. We had sixty volunteers and forty bags of trash gathered. So, it was pretty good, pretty successful. I know we filled up our bags pretty good, and I cleaned up a ton of trash. And I'm honestly seeing what people are talking about when they express that the bags of dog poop being thrown into, underneath the bridge is getting to be a problem because I picked up several of them. So, please stop picking up your dog poop and throwing it underneath the bridge. Take it home with you, put it in your trash. It's great that you're picking up the dog poop. There's even bins at the park in the common that you can drop it in. Don't just bring it down and throw it into, underneath the bridge.
You mean on the pedestrian walk under there?
No, as soon as they go underneath the bridge, either before or on the stairs, there were some on the stairs that when you're going under the bridge, there's stairs to the left.
Yeah.
And then, once you go under the bridge, there was a whole bunch of them, and some of them were dangling from the trees.
Nice.
The tree branches and stuff. And it's like, ah.
Nice respect.
They put it in a bag, and then they-
They put it in a bag and they toss it in. And it's like, ah. So, please clean up your dog poop. Take it home with you and put it in your trash, or throw it in the trash bin in the center of town there. And then also whoever's using the nip bottles, stop because we get tired of cleaning up your nip bottles in town. There's a lot of nip bottles everywhere. But other than that, everybody did an amazing job, very proud of everybody. The town looks amazing. You definitely seen the difference between, you know, before the trash cleanup and after. I was actually driving through town looking for trash after that, and I'm like, wow, everybody got everything. This is great. And, you know, Lucy Stone, you know, Tim, and, you know, Dan, and everybody over there, they did an amazing job cleaning up Lucy Stone. They filled up several bags and cleaned up along the river there, you know, along the schools, everywhere. Everybody did a really good job, and it makes me very proud to be a member of this town, to see how many people volunteered to clean up our community. It was great. Even the chief, they were doing stuff out there, too. So, you know, very proud.
Yeah.
Warren's a good community to live in. Did you have any comments and concerns? Anybody from the public have comments or concerns? Yes, sir. Mr. Conrad?
Mr. Conrad, Board of Health. Well, it seems that people do not know procedures. And I've been stopped more than once on the street about, some complaint about an apartment, weeds, trash removal. If you have a viable complaint, we have a form that you can fill out in the Board of Health office. I am not going to stop in the middle of the street to go investigate something. It has to be written down what the problem is and where it is. All right? The Board of Health is here for the health and safety of the entire community, not just a specific individual who might have a beef with his neighbor. All right? I'm hoping that people realize that, yes, two of us retired, the third's close to retirement, but that does not mean we're going to spend twenty-four-seven looking in people's apartments or backyards. All right? Please fill out the form so we know what the problem is and where it is.
And they can download that form off of the website, correct?
I believe so.
And email it into the department?
Yeah.
So-
I'm not sure. I'll make sure of this.
Yeah. So, I believe you can just download the form and fill it out and email it to the Board of Health Department, too, if you have a complaint. We'll have to see. If not, we'll make that accessible to do. Well, thank you, Mr. Conrad.
When it folds, download it means that I need to have a printer, and I can fill it up, and then I need a scanner to put it back in and send it. Maybe you want to do that on a line form, like we did for the-
Well, you can just download it on your computer, too, and fill it out, and then just attach it.
I don't have this.
Well, if you have laptop or desktop.
I'm just trying to make it easy for the people.
We could probably do a digital form, too, like you did.
If you send me the form, I'll make it digital, and that will be more useful for the board.
Formal complaint form on the Board of Health page.
There you go. It's on the page, so.
Can you find that on the page?
No, it's just a PDF.
So, you'll make it, so you can digitally fill out that. It's right on the page, grab that.
Then you just, you just put the link, and people click the link, and then you can fill it out, and they will get it back.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else from Apollo have any? Chief's good. Been off? It's been two weeks.
I don't know.
Which is nice. All right. Anybody out there on Zoom have any comments or concerns? There's nobody on Zoom, is there?
I don't know. It doesn't tell anymore who's on there. So, it used to-
Really?
What about down there at the bottom? There, it says, how many are in?
Participants. It's just, yeah, but now you have to do this, right?
Yeah.
It used to show it at the top. You could tell regularly.
So, I'm thinking maybe we should probably switch to Teams.
Yeah.
Because Teams is free. If you do Microsoft Teams.
How much, how long have we paid for Zoom so far? Six months?
No, I paid a year, like in January.
So, we still have?
So, we have a year.
Yeah.
Well, we could explore Teams at some point, too, then. Use this, but then switch over to Teams, because that would be free. And it seems like if they're taking away stuff on Zoom.
I just think it's his settings, because I can see my people over there when I do Zoom.
It could be, but I didn't set anything. So, it's just like-
Things move around.
I just opened it up.
But anyway, nobody commented, so nobody's on Zoom. All right. So, no more comments and concerns. We'll move on to, next meeting is going to be Thursday, May second, two thousand twenty-four. That is six P.M. And that is Thursday, May twenty-second, well, May second, two thousand twenty-four, at six P.M. And motion to adjourn?
Sure. I mean, it's not even seven. I mean, we could go on for another hour, maybe an hour and a half, you know?
We had a week between. I think everybody wants to go home and spend time with their families, though.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hucker, aye.
Derek Bellis, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. We are adjourned.